Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting in order. Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, proceed with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Chairman Bohm.
Here.
Item number three additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
This time I would move to make the additions, deletions, and additions to the agenda, the proclamation for season of nonviolence, and the third-party benefit consultant agreements.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We are going to move item 3A, which will become 6B, and 3B will become 11N. Do I have a motion for the agenda?
Move the approval of the agenda as amended. Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed. Item number five, minutes of previous meetings.
This time I'd like to move that the minutes of the January 3, 2013 organization meeting be approved and filed.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number 6A, we've got a proclamation for Ed Smith. I actually ran into him earlier, and I told him the meeting was going to be here at 6:00. So when he shows up, what we'll do is we'll just put him, throw him up there wherever we're at, and the agenda's fine. So I told him to come back.
Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the proclamation and appreciation for Edward Smith.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number 6B.
I would like to approve the proclamation declaring January 30, 2013 through April 4, 2013 as a season for nonviolence.
Support on that.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number-
Just for the record, I will be presenting that on the 30th, so.
You seconded that?
Greatop.
Commissioner Rushing. Greatop. Rushing.
Rushing. Sorry about that.
Ms. Falk, would you like to get up there, please? Oh, okay. Well, when he shows up, not a problem. Do we do the consent agenda?
We have not done that yet.
Okay. Consent agenda, items 7A through 7L.
I move that the consent agenda be approved as submitted.
I'd support.
Okay. Any discussion on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Let's go to reports of standing committees. Mr. Greatop.
I have no report from the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee at this time.
Mr. Rushing.
None at this time.
Mr. Riley.
None at this time.
Mr. Samasco.
No report.
Mr. Tomian.
I have nothing.
Howard.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I'd like to have Nicky, could you please go up? Mr. Smith, it's not a sting operation. I know you see the police officer there that- (laughing).
Super Bowl tickets, or?
Yeah.
Hi, we have Sergeant Tippie with us. This proclamation is in recognition of Edward W. Smith and appreciation for hosting the St. Clair County Homeland Security Emergency Functional Exercise. Whereas Edward W. Smith has been a lifelong resident at St. Clair, Michigan, he owns the River Bed Marina in St. Clair, Michigan, and an avid racer for Cleveland Construction for 15 years. And whereas Edward W. Smith is a supporter of first response emergency services activities, he hosted 2012 Systems Integration Functional Exercise on October 3. Ed was a great asset to the planning team. He gave both his time and his employees' time to pick up, set up, deliver, and build equipment and props for the exercise. He furnished us with his facility, the boat, equipment, and it allows to tape video for the exercise. And he also provided 120 participants and 20 local, state, and federal agencies lunch. Whereas his willingness to serve the community by a contribution made with the exercise, we would like to honor Edward W. Smith in appreciation of his efforts, cooperations, and assistance to make this a successful exercise. Now, there it be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners does hereby adopt this proclamation extending our deepest appreciation to Edward W. Smith for his distinguished service and urge and encourage our fellow citizens to join in commemorating his services with a heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
Mr. Smith. Ed turned his whole marina over that day so they could come in and do the exercise, and I won't even tell you which boat they used down there to put the suspicious package on. Mine. Ed, thanks for doing that. Seriously.
Put them with the other suspicious packages.
We're going to move back to reports of standing committees. I'm just going to touch on one thing, and we're going to talk a little bit about it, perhaps in the Administrator's Report, because it is going to be one of the items on our workshop. As many of you know, there's been a lot of discussion as far as the convention center and possibly using a professional management company to manage that facility. Mr. Kaufman, we gave him some direction last week to get engaged in those discussions. A lot of the discussions we've had also, in this professional management arrangement, should we be looking at other pieces of the puzzle, so to speak? Hence McMorn, Atchison, some of the other facilities that county may have. Went and spoke with the McMorn Authority Board last week, talked to them about this concept, and they overwhelmingly would like to be part of the RFP process. What McMorn would like to do, they have three different individuals that they would have liked to be part of it to kind of help, I guess formulate, some of the stuff that they're perhaps looking for. Atchison's has been part of this discussion. As many of you know, the Maritime Center is possible in some of their plans, Bean Dock, some of their other facilities. Really, we're taking the 30,000-mile view on this. I don't have any hard details, obviously, at this time, but I think all the different entities that we spoke with, city officials, so on and so forth, have embraced this concept and would like to see it move forward. Now Carl, and we can talk about this now or we can talk about it a little bit later because Carl Tomian, new Commissioner here, was part of the original RFP process, I think, when they looked at McMorn going out at the time. So Carl's got a lot of information and a lot of background on that, too. So that's kind of where we're at with this. And our workshop next week, this is going to be one of the items on the workshop to maybe talk a little bit more in depth about it. So, and then Bill's, I guess, report later. We've got, going to have different items that are going to be on our workshop, and I'm going to talk a little bit later about them, just briefly, and we'll have more information on those. So that's my report. Any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none. Moving on. Item number 10, unfinished business. There's no unfinished business to come before us. Item number 11A, approval of county disbursements.
This time I would move for approval of county disbursements for December 2012. If no one else has it, I'll move it, but what's the amount? Support? We need the amount, though.
Eight million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-six dollars, twenty-one cents.
Okay. Got support. Discussion on any of these items? Seeing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Okay. Item number B, the 2013 dispatch training grant application. We've got Tim Conger, our Central Dispatch Director, here.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the application of the 2013 Public Safety Answer Point Dispatcher Training Funds.
Support.
Tim, you have anything you want to say on it at all? Okay. Just a grant. Any discussion? Seeing none. This, no money. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number C, the 2012 Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board approve the 2012 Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program Agreement in the amount of $28,500.
Support.
Discussion.
Just, we have to make a $7,125 match there to that one.
Okay. Questions?
It can be done as in-kind labor.
Okay. Roll call on that.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. I'm going to do something out of text here. I should have had, actually, Tim, can you give us just a little update on the Lapeer County status? I know you've been keeping me informed, but for the rest of the commissioners, we, as the county, had talked about entering into, I'm going to stick you right up there, Tim, had talked about entering into a mutual aid agreement with Lapeer County. Lapeer County has a new 800, I think, Hertz system going online. Actually, I think they're already up online, and the last time we were at the CDA Board, we felt that it would make sense if we could work out a mutual backup type of-
The discussions I've had with Vic Martin, their director over there, has been generally through phone and email recently. He's had the flu epidemic running through his dispatch center, so he's not been able to be free to come over and visit us. He was supposed to come over to see us last week. Unfortunately, he found himself working a console, so we're trying to reschedule another meeting. He's pretty sure, or pretty hopeful, that we can get this done fairly quickly. That's really all the info I have for you at this point.
Yeah. Ultimately, what we would do is we would have to buy a piece of equipment that we would put into Lapeer's dispatch, that we would own, and Lapeer would put a piece of equipment into ours to-
That is very possible, sir. With the new radio systems, MC7500s, depending on how much of a demand we have, it is possible for us to just simply put our radio configuration files on a jump drive and go over there and go to one of his radio consoles and just download it on there and automatically work it.
Okay.
I don't have exact idea how much equipment we're talking at this point.
Yeah, but that's still the direction that we're talking about going in. I think it makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate for the update. Anybody have any questions for Tim regarding that at all? Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
Sorry about that. We'll get back to the program here. Item number D, the human resource request, the Manning Table change for the clerk.
It's mine, the 11D.
D.
This time to approve the human resource Manning Table, converting a human resource clerk position from part-time to full-time effective January 1, 2013.
Support.
Discussion on this. Questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number E, the Parks and Recreation Manning Table Change Request.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the approval of the amendments to the Park and Rec Commission Manning Table, converting one clerk typist position from part-time to full-time, and converting two park ranger positions from seasonal to permanent part-time.
Do I have a second on this?
Question for Bill. Bill, is that recommended?
We have a second. No, no.
Yeah. Second. Okay, yeah. And we've got Mark here, too, and-
Well, maybe Mark will explain. I just said, what's the purpose for that? Savings? What, I think it costs us in the long run, doesn't it?
The two proposed changes are not savings. They're going to cost us additional dollars that have been budgeted in the Parks and Recreation budget and funded out of the County Park Village. The first was recommended in the PROS consulting report from 2010 to give us a little more stability in the office. There's a strong fear that we push reducing the hours of part-time, that we, our ability to keep quality and train quality staff would be limited, so that's to convert one-
Do you believe that to be true, Mark, that we'll keep quality?
Yeah, I have serious doubts that we'll be able to keep. And we, it will allow us with that kind of a full-time position commitment to know she's going to stay and cross-train her with the office managers, which is what the recommendation was. In the case of the park ranger positions, our ability to attract higher quality candidates to the ranger, or the permanent position by the hourly rate being going from seven, seven dollars plus to 13, and being able to work them year-round, even at the 28-hours-a-week limit will be enhanced. We do fine with the seasonal, the seasonal park rangers in the summer when we're mowing a lot of grass and doing that, but most of them go back to school, and our ability to attract and keep people in the winter months is compromised, and this will allow us to retain or recruit in higher quality. We have been, in the last several years, less able to get higher and keep retirees that used to, oftentimes are the background, backbone of part-time staff for parks, you know, active retirees that want to work outdoors. So we believe both of those proposed changes will let us operate better and have more consistency in the staff.
Bill, you want?
Sure. Just a couple of quick comments. Most of you probably remember the PROS report that we talked quite a bit about last year. That was a consultant that came in, evaluated some of the operations within the Parks and Rec Commission, and made a number of recommendations. Over the past couple of months, Mark and I have been speaking quite a bit about some of the issues that were raised in the PROS report, and some of the problems and challenges he's faced that he has just mentioned to you here today. I think what you'll be seeing over the next year is a number of those recommendations that were laid out in the PROS report that really need to be addressed to correct some situations within Parks and Rec Commission will be coming forward to you. This is really just the first one. I think you're going to see some more throughout the year. Those commissioners that are new, you probably would like to get a copy of the PROS report. So are you making a note? I'm sure Mark would be happy to spend a little bit of time with you to go over that and give you some background on the report. Many of those recommendations, Mark and I have talked about, and they've been included in work plans for the upcoming year. So I think you're going to see quite a few opportunities for Mark to come in front of you and talk about some of the staffing issues he's had and some of the organizational issues that he's been challenged with over the last year.
Was that a 2011 report, Bill? What year was that?
I think it was actually issued in 2011.
2010, I believe.
2010? Okay.
Time flies.
I think, yeah. When did we start talking about it here? Early in 2011, perhaps?
If you sent a digital copy of that, I'd like to get that as well.
Yeah, at the time, I know we had put a hold on quite a, you know, few of the changes at the time, and I know there's, you know, put some positions in and things like that. There's just a lot of questions.
Some of the recommendations weren't very good, though. Some were good and some were not good.
Yeah.
Well, I think some of the recommendations were good. They just didn't fit into the structure that we have here in St. Clair County in terms of our union agreements and the working relationships we had, so we had to tweak that a little bit to make it work.
Was that Manning's schedule with the six line supervisors, was that a PROS recommendation? Was that just-
Yeah, that was a PRO recommendation.
That was what I'm talking, that was-
Oh, okay.
Six managers and four employees was like, wait a minute.
And I think it really, the other night at our Park and Rec meeting, it really hit me, the changes we've had since I joined this board 10 years ago. We went from one county park and one park and rec, excuse me, one trail, Watons to Evoqua Trail, back when you were with me, Tom, and now we have, what, would I count five? Fort Grasset Lighthouse, the Fort Grasset County Park, Columbus County Park, Goodell's County Park, and of course, Woodsong County Park. So we've added tremendously to the opportunities for our citizens to enjoy some, I think, fantastic park facilities. And if they haven't had a chance to visit some, I would encourage them to do that.
Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, just a couple.
David.
I see you're going to have two hours less per week, if I understood it right, for the permanent park rangers. Is the structure going to, is their job description, anything changing other than changing to 28?
No, no. It's mainly an hour, you know, hourly rate and the number of hours they can work in a year.
Okay, because I see the increase isn't too much there, and I'm sure you can answer this, too, but I have more of a question on your, the clerk typist. See, it's going to increase the hours to seven, 37 and a half a week, so seven and a half a week, but the pay went up quite a bit. So that's a pretty substantial pay raise for the-
For which position?
For the clerk. Typist.
No, the wage does not change at all.
Okay. So you're going seven and a half hours?
The benefits is, the fact that they will qualify for county benefits is the cost.
It's all, that total cost is just in benefits, then? That's pretty substantial? Okay.
And just as a point, the PROS report, we knew we had grown very rapidly, and we, our management and organization needs to be updated to catch up with a system that has six parks and, rather than one main park, so that's the goal that we're, we'll be working on to make us a more efficient and better operating department.
Any more discussion for Mark?
Just a comment, because in that PROS report, we talked about having a business plan for each of our parks. Could you just comment on how that's progressing?
We're working on that right now. We identified Fort Grasset County Park as the first property to do, in that it's the logistic, it's a simpler park and it's how it's operated, and that we'd get to work the bugs out. One of the big challenges is trying to shift our ability to track costs to individual property. This past year, by assigning percentages to employees, we can get a better idea of how much of full-time staff time is devoted to the park and things like that. Assigning vehicles to individual parks, so we're making great progress with the financial tracking and reporting so that we can, when we do a plan, we can show you better how much it costs to operate Fort Grasset County Park, and then give a better discussion of how to move forward with that property.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item number F, the inter-agency agreement between Community Mental Health and Public Guarding Services.
I'll move to approve the integrity of agreement with St. Clair County Community Mental Health Authority for Public Guardian Services for a term of 10-1, 2012 through 9-30, 2013, in the amount of $50,000.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item number G, the Light Station Walkways Contract Change Order.
This time I'd like to move to approve the change order to the DNE landscaping contract for the Light Station ADA Walkways Project in the amount of $2,462.89.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item number H, the MSU Agreement for the Extension Service for 2003, and we do have Mr. Bixler here.
You see before you are the, our annual Plan of Work Agreement that we need to have approved by the county board. If you recall, last year, we entered into a five-year agreement that talks about our relationship as partners between MSU Extension and yourselves, but annually, we have to approve the amount that you placed in our budget through the general fund appropriation process. And the annual plan of work, excuse me, is what is in your budget that we're asking for approval tonight. So the amount that was in the plan of work is in our budget, and it was approved in the 2013 general fund appropriation budget process. I can answer more questions if that-
Any questions at all for Mr. Bixler? If not, do I have a motion? Second.
11H, move to approve the agreement for Extension Service with Michigan State University for 2013, the amount of $24,912.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Actually, roll call, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item number I, Resolution 13-01 for the indigent defense rate of pay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the adoption of Resolution 1301, setting criminal indigent defense counseling rate of pay for St. Clair County Circuit and District Courts.
Second.
Support.
Any discussion on this?
Quick question?
Yes.
Did this come from Chief Judge? Is he the one that sets this recommendation? Okay, thank you.
And then we have to approve it, and the rate is 60 per hour.
Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number J, the Vehicle Acquisition, Replacement, and Assignment Utilization Policy Revisions.
At this time, I'd like to move to adopt the revisions to the Vehicle Acquisition, Replacement, and Assignment Utilization Policy as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number K, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Appointment.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to appoint Frederick Babcek to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors representing District 7 for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 10/31/2013.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number L, the Board of Commissioners 2013-2014 Bylaws.
This time I would move to adopt the Board of Commissioners bylaws for 2013 and 2014.
Support.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number M, the revisions to the 2013 BOC meeting schedule. Do I have a motion and second? This will probably change bunches, too, so.
I'll move the... Well, that's all right. I was going to move the revisions of the Board of Commissioners 2013 meeting schedule, adding a workshop on January twenty-fourth, 2013, at 2:00 P.M., and rescheduling the February fourteenth quarterly workshop to February twenty-eighth at 5:30 P.M.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion on that at all? Except for some of the new board members, we do have a lot of times workshops that are scheduled. Depending on, depending on, depending on what issues come up, we jostle those around. But I am personally a big fan of the workshop format, so... That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number twelve, the administrator's report. I'm going to turn this over to Bill, and can you talk a little bit about, at the end of the report?
What N?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Jumped ahead, the third-party benefit consultants agreement, item number N.
Okay. I would move to approve the revised Schedule A with Blue Cross and Blue Shield and the agent processing agreement with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Brown and Brown of Central Michigan Incorporated.
Support? Discussion. I'm going to go do the roll call on that. Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Okay, Bill, actually, if you could, at the end of your administrator's report, maybe talk a little bit about some of the items that we're going to have on the workshop, and we can kind of tag-team that.
Sure, okay. This'll be an abbreviated report, because I just gave you an administrator's report two weeks ago. There's not a whole lot new to share with you, but there are a couple of important things I want to make sure you're aware of. First of all, the normal monthly financial report on the Convention Center project was distributed at your last meeting. The next report will be made available to you in February. The opinion of cost, last meeting, we talked a little bit about the opinion of cost, or really reconciling the budgets, the cost estimates for the construction of the Convention Center, just based on the schematic design that was reviewed by you several months ago. Again, the schematic design is basically agreeing on the size or the volume of this facility. And then what we do is, we take a look at, will a facility of the quality we're looking for, can it be constructed within the nine million dollar budget that we've set? So, what we've been doing for about the last month is really honing in on the cost estimates for the project. Our construction manager put together a cost estimate. We then asked our architects to put together a cost estimate. We included some figures that was provided by our site engineer, Tetra Tech, for some of the site costs. We've been reconciling those, bringing them closer together. And as of about one o'clock this afternoon, our project team feels comfortable with the reconciliation that has occurred, and we have advised the architects that the schematic design package is ready for approval. They'll be receiving signed copies of the schematic design package from York Consultants, CSL, Convergence Design, as well as a signature from myself. Basically, what that approval does is it puts the architects on notice that we've agreed on the volume of the facility, we've agreed on the budget for the facility, and now it's up to them to begin the detailed design work. So, over the next probably ninety days, you'll receive regular reports on where we are with the design of the project. I'm sure that the architects will be in here at least once, probably twice, to spend some time with you to go over where we are, what we're looking at, and some of the variables that we might be including in the bid package that will be going out later this spring. Earlier today, we also had a meeting with Mr. Bob Rates. Bob Rates works with Jim Logston. Those are the two landfill consultants that we hired about a year and a half ago to help us drive down some of the costs of operating the landfill and to help us with developing some efficiencies out there in the way we operate the landfill. Mr. Rates is charged lately, has been, to review the current fees and charges with our existing landfill engineer and go out and seek some additional quotes or prices from others that are qualified to do this work as well. Validate the fees that our current engineer is charging, see if they remain competitive, and on our behalf, begin negotiating with our engineer on a new contract. Mr. Rates has completed his recommendations. He will be presenting them to the Board of Commissioners on February seventh. And then, based on your response and recommendation, hopefully, you'll agree with his recommendation. We will then be forming a negotiating team, which will include Mr. Rates and several staff members, and they'll be meeting with the appropriate engineers to put together a contract that will later come back to the board for your execution. So, keep in mind, February seventh, he'll be appearing with his recommendations. I do want to spend just a few minutes also talking about compliance strategies with the Affordable Care Act. Most departments have implemented their strategies for compliance. In fact, many of the, in your consent agenda, you'll notice there's a list of staffing changes that were made throughout the organization. An awful lot of those changes, probably about seventy-five percent of those positions, were the direct result of those strategies being used by those departments to ensure that they are complying with the Affordable Care Act. So, you'll be seeing more of that. We've got a couple of departments that are still finalizing their strategies. We are working very closely with them, our finance department, as well as our HR department. Our goal is to make as many of those changes budget-neutral as possible, and if they require Manning table changes, they'll be coming to the board for those approvals. The last thing that we want to talk a little bit about is the budget work, pardon me, the workshop, the Board of Commissioners workshop for the twenty-fourth next week. It is scheduled for 2:00 P.M. here in this office. Agendas were issued today. I believe they were probably emailed to you, so if you haven't seen them yet, take a look at your email. They should be included in there. Couple of the items that you'll see, landfill and solid waste planning. We'll be talking more about some of the issues that you've been discussing the last couple of months. We're bringing more information to the table on the solid waste management plan amendment process, what the law requires you to do, what the law allows you to do. We're also...
Well, I was just going to say, there's four or five issues that I think we've got to get a consensus on, give Bill some direction here as far as what we want him working on, and just, you know, this is your marching orders, and this is the direction that we'd like to go on some of these things and hone some of these items down. So, then that gives Bill the opportunity to get the people he needs to get together to work on these issues and then bring stuff back to the board.
Yeah, there were quite a few recommendations that Mr. Logston shared with the board back in December. So, we're looking for some assistance from the board on which of those recommendations do you want us to begin moving on, developing a list of priorities so we can get staff moving in the appropriate direction. We are getting ready to put together the notices for bidding banking. Every couple of years, the county does need to go out and bid their banking, and it's been a while since we've done that. It is very time-consuming. There is a lot of paperwork involved. There's a lot of analysis that's necessary. We'll be talking a little bit about that, the process, how long we think it might take, some of the resources we may have to bring in to assist us in that process.
Yeah, I'm actually sent out a meeting to meet with Kelly Burnett-Roberts, our treasurer here this following week coming up, getting a little bit more information from her, and then she's going to be in talking with us, too, on some of the different ideas that we've had on some of the banking issues, and that'll be presented at the workshop also.
So, we'll be discussing the bidding of our banking services at that workshop?
Yeah. Yeah, these workshops, Carl, usually last a couple hours long, and I mean, we talk about issues quite in-depth.
Just two cents here. I mean, I agree with Bill, going through the process to bid your banking is a very time-consuming process, and I wonder if it's really that important now to be doing something like that when we've got so many other things on the administrator's plate.
Some of the other items, truthfully, that were discussed in the banking piece that happens with Kelly is there previously, the previous board had a philosophy of maybe we need to look at perhaps putting some money. The county has, you know, substantial amounts of money in multiple accounts. Do we need to? And they generally are with one institution. Should we be looking at perhaps dealing with some of the other, you know, county-wide institutions, maybe some of the smaller banks, things like that? And be quite honest, Tim, Commissioner Ward, he sold, he didn't want to touch it, talk about it, be accused of anything, you know, that kind of thing, and so we didn't really bring it up at the time. So, this is the time that we're going to, I think, resurrect that, because there are a lot of local community banks that do participate in a lot of stuff, and quite honest, we don't have any of their money in them. So, it doesn't make sense to look at spreading it around to some of them. Those types of discussions.
Well, that, I think that's completely different than bidding all our banking services.
Yeah, it's literally, it's going to, it's multiple, you know, maybe we don't do the banking piece of it and bidding it, and this is a piece we want to do. And that's what the workshops are all about, to kind of get the flavor.
I'm just saying, I think changing our investment policy is one thing, but bidding all the banking services, all the different kinds of checking, the electronic transfer, I mean, and the number of proposals you're going to receive and everything, it's not that it's a bad thing to do, but how much added value is there to that? It's going to be such a time-consuming task for the staff that unless there's something more we need to learn about it...
No, and I think, and that's part of the discussion, really. It was something that we talked about at the previous board, and if we had the workshop and we decided we don't want to go that direction, we just tell Karen, we're not interested at this time. But I think, when I put banking down, I think I kind of lumped it into three or four items that I guess you could say that are going to be in banking. That's the thing with the workshops, we talk about a lot of stuff, and it's very loosey-goosey, you know, just, you know, literally, and, you know.
Thank you.
There continues to be a lot of issues to discuss regarding development out at the airport. We've had some good meetings to last probably sixty days with some potential project partners. We are getting close to some potential agreements on some of those projects, and we'll be talking with the board. Hopefully, we'll have some significant information to share with you next week on that.
I'm sure the Convention Center, that's going to be continually ongoing, but I think the RFP piece of it is really the piece that we need to hone in on, because I know that's the direction that, you know, has been, you know, talked amongst all the entities, and perhaps we can get some meetings with them beforehand, but if not, just kind of what's the whole general flavor, you know?
And this, and this particular proposal to try and bid out management of multiple facilities or venues is not something that's just come up in the last couple of months. It's actually something that Chairperson Bohm and myself have talked with the city, with McMorn, with Atchison Ventures about for probably the last year, year and a half. We were just, when it was initially presented, everyone was on board with it. We just didn't feel we were right, the timing was right yet. We've had a couple of these potential bidders stay in touch with us, just to find out where we are with our projects. I think there's going to be a lot of interest out there, and we certainly feel by packaging a number of facilities and potential venues, we'll be able to get a very well-qualified, a very experienced manager and someone who is going to really be able to do some wonderful things for our community.
Could I have Carl chime in for a sec, Steve, and then we'll get to you, just because Carl had been through this process before? How long, when you guys started the McMorn thing, was that a sixty, ninety day? Can you kind of take me through?
I was going to say...
Can you take me through the process a little bit, I guess, as far as how?
We tried to model our process over what Saginaw County did for the Wendler Arena, and they did that back in, I'm going to say, 2002, 2004, something like that. They had very similar problems to what McMorn's facing, and they wanted to get better utilization of the firm, of the facility, and, you know, turn the operations around. Had to be done financially, and so they went out. One of the problems that you have today in that entertainment business is being a standalone. It's very similar to what you've been talking about with a hotel and having a flag. You know, you really need some of these national, or at least regional consultants, to assist you in operating these facilities, because they can spread the risk of different types of entertainments and events over several different venues. They just have a lot more economies of scale. And in Saginaw, they had a company called SMG that was brought in, and they operated the Wendler Arena and the theater for about twenty-four months, and they came, after they'd been operating it for about twenty-four months, they came up with a series of recommendations about how you could improve it. It suffered from some of the same problems that McMorn does. When you have a concert in an ice arena, the acoustics aren't great, and if you want to be successful in the concert business, you've got to improve the acoustics. Well, they came up with recommendations and how much that would cost. They looked at the theater. They made changes, especially in the traffic pattern of bringing customers to the theater, dropping them off, the parking, many things like that. They ended up putting a proposal together, and what had actually happened is the city gave up ownership of the facility, turned it over to the county, because the city was in financial trouble and they couldn't continue to finance the deficits anymore. And then the county hired this firm, they came up with a bunch of recommendations, and after they'd operated it for about twenty-four months, they came up with a ballot proposal to finance the improvements, and they put it on the ballot, and it passed in Saginaw County, and they made the improvements, and they turned the whole facility around. But it's very hard for amateurs to look at something and really understand it.
So, when you looked at that, I guess, that model over here, you looked at bringing somebody in to do management, to perhaps give you an assessment on, it's like anything, I mean, everybody's got opinions, I guess, on whether it's McMorn or Convention Center, you know, so on and so forth. Did you write, do you wrote specific things that you were looking for? Was it kind of an open-door RFP? You tell us what we're looking for, or did you have to hold it down?
We developed a two-step process in our RFP. The first part of the process was a qualifications process. Now, this is, you know, four or five years ago. I can't recall it all, but we probably had five to ten firms that qualified, and then we ended up with really two national firms and one local firm that we were considering. It was a, it was a pretty easy decision to make because of the way that we wrote the RFP.
Some of that information, I'm assuming the city still would have, you know, the qualifications, and I mean, did you bring somebody in to assist you through that RFP process, or did you guys?
We really did it ourselves. It was really a combination of the city staff. I was leading the city staff part of it, and then Larry Careybock was the manager of McMorn, then he worked on it, too. And he had a lot of connections with people in that business, and we looked at what several communities had done across the country.
And yours was McMorn-specific at the time?
Ours was just McMorn-specific at the time.
Okay, Steve, you had some?
Jeff, we've talked about this. My point has always been that the county is embarking on the business of a convention center. We are, that is a business. And as smart as we are, or in this board, we don't know the first thing about running a convention center or the convention center business. In the last six or eight months, I've learned a great deal about construction and management and business and a number of things about the convention center. and business and a number of things about the convention center, but it absolutely must be managed by a professional if it's going to be a successful business. That's only a part of it. The other piece of it, however, to me, is we have projected that this facility will lose hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for the next thirty years. The better we manage it, the less likelihood there will be that we will, you know, overblow that deficit, or the better it's managed, the less burden will be on county finances. When we join forces with entities that we don't have fiscal responsibility for, the city or Atchison, I don't want to compete against ourselves for business or for success. So, my concern is, like you said, Saginaw, they donated a facility to the county, and then the county managed it. Well, to have a city facility managed by the same manager as the county facility that may be drawing from some of the same places, I've got some issues with that. I'm trying to get my head wrapped around it. It just seems incongruous to have that kind of an arrangement. So, unless there's something about, you know, the way we manage convention centers, and I've looked at three or four around the country, from Bill Kruger's presentation, the Davis County, Utah facilities, and others, kind of branched out, every one of them has an SMG or one of these companies that manage, but I've yet to find one, and of course, I didn't ask specifically, that managed competing facilities or facilities for different government entities, but that's really a concern I have.
Yeah, and I think when you talk about competing, but I think if you look at what McMorn really offers, ICE, are they really in the convention business? You know, they don't do much of it. What I don't, I guess I don't want to get into is a situation, if we can work together, so be it. If we can't, I don't want to get into a situation where we bring a professional management group and then they cannibalize, you know, everything else that's out there. In my mind, we should be working. And when I look at, I look at staffing levels, you know, we're required to have X amount of staff at the convention center. McMorn's required to have X amount of staff, some of these other things. In my mind, a lot of it would be, today you go over to the convention center, you set up, you've got this thing going on here. Tomorrow, you go over to McMorn and just, you know, trying to drive some economies and scale into it.
And I don't disagree with that for maintenance or setup or things like that, but as far as somebody who's going to, the person we hired to manage that facility, it's going to be performance-based management, from my perspective. They better show me that they can manage that place, make money, keep our costs down, or they're gone. That's the way business works, you've got to produce, and I don't want, I just want to be upfront about it.
And truthfully, this isn't, we can go out there and see what's out there, maybe there won't be an agreement that works for all the above, and we go our separate ways, but...
What does Kruger recommend? I mean, Bill Kruger would be a great example. What do they recommend, or what's the common in the industry? I don't know, but that's just an initial concern I have. So, maybe if you get a chance to talk about that with one of the experts we already have working for us for success on this facility, like Kruger or Geisel, maybe they can shed some light on that.
Actually, my discussions have been with CSL, with Bill Kruger, and Mr. Kruger will assist us in developing the RFP. He will assist us in the analysis of the proposals that are received.
If you get a chance to ask him specifically about my concern, maybe you can do that, because I'd like to, I'd like to hear something about that.
Yes, and we actually have had, he and I have had some discussions about the concern that you raise about managing multiple facilities.
By different owners.
He has had some experience with that in some of the communities he's had some work with. One of the things that he is doing on our behalf right now is calling all of the potential bidders that he's had experience with and finding out for them, from them, if they'd be interested in even managing multiple venues. And he knows a little bit about each of those facilities. Each of them have offered different types of opportunities.
And one thing that does weigh in favor of what Jeff's proposing is, one of the problems in getting a rock star manager for this facility is, it's not big enough.
Exactly.
You need to have large facilities to draw in, you know, rock star managers, so I get all that.
Yep.
Howard?
I just think, on the surface, looking at it, the more we can market the whole area, it's a win-win for everyone. It's a win-win for McMorn, it's a win-win for Atchison, it's a win-win for us at the convention center, and all of the facilities that we can...
My concern, Howard, is if you increase the deficit to the county, it's not a win-win for the county. It's the county picks up the tab, and I want to make sure our piece is successful.
Oh, I can't agree with you more.
I think you make a great point, but another thing, another way to look at it is, we could have three facilities with three different managers, with different marketing programs, and we're not really that large a community. We're trying to sell all of our assets. Now, it may not work. I think the governance has got to be separate. I mean, I don't think we should propose to be, as a county, running McMorn or running Atchison's facilities, but I think sharing a common consultant, if the consultants are interested in it, there's a lot of fixed costs that...
Oh, sure, there's some economies, economies of scale, I get that, yeah.
To get, we can spread the cost of the rock star out.
Mr. Raetsch?
Well, I think it was pretty clear that I was not in favor of the convention center to start with, and I have to say that it's there, and now that it's there and in place, we've got to make it work. I mean, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, or we're all going to pay heavy. So, my opinion is, is from just myself coming into it, that I like the idea of consolidation, if we can work it out, and I understand where you're coming from, Steve, and I agree with you. We have to make, it's a winner on this whole program if we can get everybody to work together. We cannot, as a county, run the convention center, and we cannot, we cannot be in that position. We can also, and if you get just somebody to run, and Carl, or as you or Steve mentioned, that one little small segment, and have a person try to run it, it's not going to work up there. I mean, it's too small of a unit. So, getting the three together, I think, is probably a good way to go, or certainly it's a good way to think about running it. But either, no matter how this works out, we have to make this thing work up there, and we've got to do it so the taxpayers are going to be happy with us and not throw any more rocks. I mean, I'm hearing daily from somebody about it, and they come out in the paper and make comments on it, that was in yesterday, about how much money's being spent, et cetera. Got to be some good communication between this board, and I'm not saying we haven't, but what I'm saying is, we've got to have good communication between this board and the people, because to make them realize this is going to work, we're working hard to make it work, and I think it can, now that it's there, but we have to take a good look, and I like the idea of getting somebody in that knows what the heck is going on, and let them maybe step up to play. Maybe we'll see their cost, and that'll shock everybody.
Yeah, we are just in the very infancy stages of this, and as I often say, there'll be more to come, and if there's things we don't like about it, doesn't happen, but I think at least I do, the spirit of cooperation with all the different organizations, entities, was overwhelming. There wasn't anybody, you know, downplaying it. You even talk about facilities, our Parks and Recs facilities, I'm not saying they're going to run our Parks and Recs, but event, professional event producers have a lot of, they have a thick rolodex, and they have a lot of different things, so the more things that you can put on the table for some plug and play for some of these other events. One of them manages equestrian parks, you know, they have management, so is there an event that they could do that could perhaps, you know, plug into some of those things? Those are all the things that we've got to take a look at, so there'll be more to come. Anything else? Any other issue? Oh, I'm sorry, Carl, yeah.
Just from my own information, I've had people asking me this, and since I just joined the board. When is the convention center going to open? When is the hotel going to open? And when is the culinary school planned to be?
To be announced.
To be announced.
The culinary school, the latest that I've heard is that they plan on moving students into that facility in March. Some of the students are already here, but they're attending classes at Baker's Campus on the pier, but their plan is to move some of those students into the facility in March. The hotel is...
Correct me if I'm wrong, having one just kitchened on, I mean, there's going to be a whole lot of other stuff to finish. They're concentrating on one piece of it, so I don't want you to think that the whole building's going to be done by March.
I think the building looks great, as it's being erected now. I went by it again today, and it looks like it's going to be quite a nice facility.
The goal of the hotel is to be up and running, hopefully, sometime in June. That, we'd also, the ballroom, which the county now owns, the existing ballroom, would be completely refurbished, and that would be open and ready for use at the same time that the hotel is open as well. The convention center itself, we're looking for bidding and awarding some contracts late this spring, probably in April or May, and construction would begin very shortly thereafter.
And...
When it would open, a lot of it is going to depend on the weather, you know, because some of that construction will be occurring at the tail end of the construction season, so it, a lot of it will depend on what kind of a fall and winter we have in thirteen and fourteen.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
One other thing that was on the workshop was the budget process for 2014. We're going to talk a little bit about that, and I guess, kind of what's the flavor of the board, and talking with the, you know, elected officials. I know we've done percentage cuts, you know, the last few years, and be quite frank, I don't know if the percentage cut thing is going to work this year, you know? I mean, it may be perhaps programmatic issues, we'll get some, not programmatic issues, programs, some other types of things, but we'll have to have that discussion, and it's, for some of the new commissioners, it seems like that's the majority of the time, is you're talking about budgets. We just adopted a budget, we just put a place in the budget, and we're talking about the 2014 budget. How do you want to, you know, go? So, that'll be on there, too.
Mr. Chair, I'm particularly interested in seeing what happens with our property tax base, and looking forward to that. Hopefully, not going down anymore, but starting to creep up a little bit, which would take some pressure off of us on these budget years.
Any other items that any other commissioners, I guess, would like to see on? David, but I'm going to throw that out for a second and give everybody a minute or two to think about it. If there's anything else that you'd like to see on the workshop? Speak now or forever hold your peace. David?
Just, everybody received this, but I just wanted to bring it up. For the empty St. Clair County chapter for the Michigan Towns Association, where they're going to have the 2013 dinner meeting, I'm sure you received the invitations in the mail. It'll be at the Four Lakes Banquet Center on February 15th, from 6:00 PM until whenever. This year, they're going to have Senator Phil Pavlov question and answer with ongoing legislation, any new legislation. So, it's like we're going to have a county administrator there by the name of Bill Coffman, given the state of the county.
Is that the interim guy? Not that guy.
So, need a response by February 9th. Get on the calendar.
You all said on administration, of course, I guess. Okay, do I have a motion to receive and file administrator's report?
So, move.
Do I have a second on that?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business, none at this time. Let's go to receive and file, motion second.
This time, I'd like to move to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number fifteen, adjournment.
Move, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.